Welcome to City Council meeting number 30 in the year of 2020. This is the 27th day of January and let's begin by roll call.
Mary Ann Aitken.
Here.
Chris Alfredson.
Here.
Bill Hucklin.
Here.
Rick Vance.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Probst.
Here.
First thing we've been doing is opening our City Council in prayer and a pledge of allegiance. If you're able to stand, if you're certain or not, don't worry about it. May I have a word of prayer first? Father, we just valed for you this evening, thanking you, Father, for life. And we praise you, Father, for your goodness, for your mercy, for your provision. Father of friendship, of democracy, for the United States of America. We pray for our leaders, Father. We pray for understanding. We pray for your protection from foreign enemies. We love you and we praise your name. Be with us this evening. Give us discernment and understanding. You just have to pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a roll call. Sorry, next, we have the approval of the minutes of January 13th meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Are there any changes that you'd like?
I'll make the motion.
Motion. Christian Evans. And a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any questions or comments to be made? Now, do I have... All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any questions to present? Against likewise, Christian Evans. We are going to move... We always want to be able to have all of our citizens be able to exercise the right of free speech. So, instead of having it at the last, we want to move it to the first so that council can hear your comments and maybe discuss between ourselves up here as well. You know, when we have a designated area... I just got back from this burial boot camp. We're up here almost a week and you saw the dos and don'ts. And one of the things they indicated that, you know, that when you're in a designated area, there are many times are crabs by which to go by. So, let me just read the public comment section. Scottford City Council accept public comments. And we're going to ask you if you want to be able to speak to... We're filming as everybody goes and the filming will be put on to a YouTube site and also the city website. But if you wouldn't mind, you go over to the podium so you can address all of council. We want to hear everything you have to say. Individuals wishing to address the council would be asked to come forward. We want you to state your name for the record. Each person will be given five minutes to voice your opinion. We ask that your remarks should focus on issues, not views to target a city employee or elected officials. And what I'm asking, the reason why, don't use names if you wouldn't mind. I'm happy to address anything personally, you know, and again, no law of American claims. I think it's like that. So, tonight for public comments, who would like to go first? Yeah? Everyone? Anybody like to address the council first?
Point order. If I'm wanting to talk about the closing of the street, is that during this period?
Yes, this would be this very day.
Or is it during the reading of the 2020-1 ordinance?
No, because this would be the time to read it, to talk now. So, not during that time.
Yeah, I would like to be...
And if anybody has other areas that you want to talk about? The streets or anything else like that? So, now's the time.
Okay.
Please.
Hi, I'm Perry Hayes, living in Scottsburg on 691-1 Street. I'm speaking against the closure of the Wanda Street. I have no problems if the person that lives... I try to keep them saying names. From the person that lives on Wanda Street, I have no problem if he would say that he would like to have that area estimated and he would like to pursue it because it would improve his property and get a value placed on that property. And then agree to... The city would agree to sell it to him. I have no problem with that. But I have a problem with the city giving that amount of property away to that person. I've paid my taxes for 32 years. And the city has paid this person a well-deserved wage, thousands of... Seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year plus expenses, car, gas, meals, quiet in office. Now, this person wants the city to give him the land that would make his property more valuable. I thank you for allowing me to speak prior to you guys voting your final vote on this. The city has spent two and a half million dollars providing a walkway around Two Grand Park. Now, the ex-mayor don't want this walkway in front of his house. Wanda Street extends 268 feet to Grand Park. On the east side of Grand... The east side of this walkway, of this area, is against the city park property. The mayor, ex-mayor owned on both sides of that street, but on the very end of that street, it is on city park property. Prior council, before everyone here is on this council, did the same thing as requested and it was turned down. It was tabled because some of the people on this group would not approve giving away city property to a setting mayor. My property tax on my house, two-bedroom, two-bath, one-lot house, I pay a thousand dollars a year taxes. I know some of you say, "Well, we'll give this property to them and they will pay more taxes." The property tax right now on eight lots, a very large house, is $2,696. And my taxes on a two-bedroom, two-bath, one-lot house is a thousand dollars. The tax... The city is not going to get rich on taxes on this property. I ask each city council member to tell us, tell us or me, how this vote to give away this city property is going to benefit the city and not benefit our ex-mayor. I ask the councils each to vote for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Others? Please come forward. Is the chair everybody set? We got chairs up everybody set? Please.
Pardon me?
No, I said she locked it up too. She'll be acting here.
I'm Karen Grecious and I want the council to consider or think of some way we can do something about the parking on the east side of the square. Now that the county has closed off the doors, the only way that they can get in and out of the building, unless it's an emergency, is on the east side. So, everybody now in the county is parking in front of all of our stores. And it's creating a problem for the people that rent our stores because they have... Their customers have no place to park and they themselves... They do pretty good. They park in our parking lot, the people that are running it, our renters. But when you get customers, because we have lost customers before, lost renters before because of the parking situation. And I just... We've got all of our buildings rented now and I don't want to lose those people. So, I don't know if there's a solution, maybe to enforce the two-hour... I know Zoe, she hates this. If we could enforce the two-hour parking, maybe. But I'm going to put it in all his hands and see if he can come up with something. Thank you all.
Amen. Thank you. Please.
Hello, my name's Shelley James and I've been a resident of Scottsburg my whole life. Actually live in the house I grew up in on North Moridian Street. And I'm glad Karen spoke right before me because I actually went to her about two years ago over the same issue, rental property owners. There are the first two blocks of North Moridian, there's about four. There's trash everywhere. One of them is right next to my home and just for instance, in the backyard, there's a huge tree that died and fell over on a RV. I believe that people were living in it at the time. Nobody was in there, but there's just trash everywhere. One property on 140 North Moridian Street, the whole front porch is full of junk and trash. The property next to mine is 233 North Moridian. That's the one that's got the issue with mainly the stuff in the back. And then there's several on that block too, but the two that I mentioned are the worst. I just feel like the property owners should be held responsible. Evidently, evidently, they don't... There's nothing being fined or anything like that, or they wouldn't let the properties look like they did. I'm almost embarrassed to have people come to my house because of the... I've worked my whole life, I've paid property taxes, and I'm almost embarrassed to have people come to my home because of my next four neighbors. I've had people comment to me, you know, "Scottsburg's starting to look..." Some of the older neighbors look horrible. And that's my... That's my issue today. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if they need to be... I really don't know what kind of laws are in place to take care of that or if something needs to be changed, but it's awful. I've got pictures I'm going to send you all.
I want you to watch a little bit. We're going to show you 12 houses that are out of ordinance. These are just the first of them. But we have... I want to read you the ordinance as online. I want you to just... The ordinance officer. We have hired an ordinance officer.
Good.
And we're getting ready to send letters out, so please stay. See, because we're going to address exactly your concern.
Okay.
And the concern of so many of us.
Okay.
Because we want to have Scottsburg looks, don't taste clean.
I want to be proud. I mean, I'm not asking them... You know, I know older homes, you know, they're not going to be as beautiful as, you know, 250, $300,000 homes, but there's no sense in having trash everywhere. That's just... It's just... It's awful.
And we have ordinance of our books that you cannot. And we are going to... We're going to begin enforcement right away.
Yeah.
We have moved a man into this position, a city inspector slash code enforcement officer. We will have a man and we will look at him. And we're going to be going through signs, curving, streets, houses, backyards, whatever we have to do, you know, we have bad vehicles, we will go after this. And we've got to get Scottsburg cleaned up. It's going to increase everybody's property value.
Yes.
As well as pride in your home and our city. So, yes.
Well, those two, the 140 and the 233 North Moridian are horrible.
There's also, just like council, we have a busted sewer line right there and it's in a sidewalk that has came in that is on the city's docket to go and repair it. And to know it's on property owners because that sidewalk is easement there. We are going to go forward and fix that when we want that repaired. We want to put that sidewalk back. That's just real close to the building alone. We don't want a city to look that way. So, we are going forward and doing that. I will tell you a little bit about what's going on on Governor Street right now, but I'll wait until the end of that. But I want to address all three of these with just comments what the city is doing because you may not know what we're doing here.
No.
And but I'm going to show you what's... We're going to introduce Bradley Deaton to you and we're going to introduce some of the things he's doing.
Okay.
So, thank you so very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Who's next? Anybody else want to speak? Let me just address a couple of things that we're talking about just from the mayor's perspective. First off, parking on the east side of the square, the south side of the square, and the west side of the square, we already have an ordinance. So, it's allowed, I believe, Chief, is it two hours or three hours? I think it's three hours, isn't it?
Two hours.
Two hours?
It's close to two hours.
Okay. What I would like to see the city do, and I'll probably come to council for this, I would like the city to look to go forward to purchase the... Along with the county, I'm going to ask the county commissioners to join us in this, to purchase a lot where what we call the cage is at. And we would like to then rehab that lot and with lighting, with new painting, with some green space as well to make it very attractive. We're going to redo the square of Scottsburg. So, beautification starts at your house and it also starts at our house. Okay? So, we have a lot of ideas, putting art, cleaning the entire downtown area up, incentivizing folks to come to the downtown area. We're going to have the lodges come to downtown for you. We're going to have music. We've got a coffee shop, more restaurants coming, a whole bunch of ideas. So, this begins now. So, but I want you to know, and Chief, I want to make sure that we have an officer that we can mark tires and we're going to contact the county employees as well to make sure that we want them... They know that the county, actually the courthouse owns halfway to that street. So, they have all the inside parking for all county employees. The outside parking though, Karen knows that. And so, that should be for those retailers to be able to park there. And so, by all means, we will take action.
Thank you.
So, absolutely. Thirdly, I would like to address Lynn's concern. When you were here last time, I didn't say anything because to me, it's just like I said, if you own your home, you own halfway to Wanda Street and your neighbor owns the other half. So, for the city to give up a right, we really don't own the property because it's just going to be... That's why it went back last time you heard. When we gave up that easement on the Shipensky property, half went to Wanda and the other half went to the other corner. I was assuming it's the same way there. It wasn't. I asked Carrie to look into that and that property was actually deeded to the city. That road was actually deeded. It's not a bunch of lots. It's simply, I think, a 20-foot road going down Wanda Street. I don't know if it's a cul-de-sac.
It's 50 foot wide and it's an 80-foot cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac on the end. And that cul-de-sac...
The road's 50 feet wide?
The... The... Well, I got a plaque if you want to look at it.
I mean, I just saw where it is.
Yeah.
It's a road. You said the road's 20 feet wide and you're giving... Is it a five feet or a 10?
The cul-de-sac is 80. 40 is the comfort. And it is... And it is 50 feet wide.
50 foot wide. So, I guess that would be then giving 15 foot per lane plus a 10 foot each on each side. So... There's part property.
There's the 40 foot and there's the 80 foot.
Yeah.
And it's 50 foot wide.
50 foot wide, okay. And it goes a length of how much?
600. Well, it's 268 feet.
268.
From where it's docked right here. Right in there is where it actually stops.
Mayor, is that 50? Mayor? Is that 50 feet? The 50, is that part of the easement also?
Yeah, it would be part of the easement, yes. It looks like to me...
So, that'd be part of your grass here?
Yes. So, in other words, it's... It would be...
But it's still your property. It's just an easement.
Right, right. It's their property, but there's an easement for utilities.
Right.
So, it looks like to me that they have then 15 foot per lane, which is 30 feet on that road, and then 10 foot each on each side. So, anyways, I guess what I want to tell council is that you're not just abandoning an easement. This is actual... This is actual practice that is deeded to the city by C. Lucas in 1959. That's what the process is. But... Okay, so, with no one else wanting to speak, I'm going to then continue on. I'm going to close the public side of the meeting and we'll continue on with business. So, the only bit is this, we now come to the third reading of this ordinance, 2020-1, an ordinance to vacate the property owned by the city of Wanda Street. Do I have a motion on third reading to pass this ordinance?
Now, that also means that you're actually giving that property to adjacent owner. Is that what you... Is that what it... When you say vacate, what does that mean?
Yes, in other words, yes, I guess we need to find that... We need to find that. And if by us vacating that property, that property would then be sent to the current owner. Is that correct? I don't know. We can't do it.
You would be giving... Are you saying... I think you're saying that you're going to give the property to...
Yeah.
Adjacent owner.
Mayor? So, the property that's in front of Karen's house, she actually owns out to the middle... Owned out to the middle of the street.
She does.
And the rest of it is part of the easement, right? Okay, so it's only...
So, I mean, who owns on the other side of these?
Those plots are all owned by the mayor.
All the plots? So, his lot?
He's got eight plots there.
So?
He's got four on one side and then four on the other.
Okay. So, it goes all the way to Bradley Deaton's house?
Yeah.
And Jay Griffin's house?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, the buildings are right there?
I guess. I don't know.
So, the distinction that I think is getting... We'll get down to weeds a little bit here. On a... On the plaque, the language is "all street shown by the part of the street system of the town." So, the property was conveyed to the town essentially as a street. It was from the poet used that he be the street. That doesn't do any... That's not any more of a grant than any other street would be to the city. It would still be the vacation of the alleyway because it is a platted alleyway on the map. I mean, it's... It is not property that in the sense that you would think of a lot that the city would own and it could be used for something. The only use that it was conveyed to the city for was the use of the streets. So, it's an alleyway. So, it's not a vacation of anything other than just that. So, under statute, it would go to the surrounding property, which in this case is a street.
So, it would be the same thing as when any other street...
The street that was platted that went... Was run from Lane Street to Cedar Street. When that was vacated, then that property went to the surrounding property. Is it exactly the same? Yes.
It's exactly the same thing as the Smiths' issue?
Yes.
Mr. Stigman, in your... What you've just told us, your legal opinion, we can't use that for anything other than a street. Is that what you're telling us? The city can't... I mean, it's only for...
Well, I was going to say, so, under Indian law, I mean, we can... And with what's in our ordinance that it has presented for reading, I mean, we would retain any use of that if there's utilities. If there's ever the need or if there's any current... If there's current utilities on it, we can continue to make anything about that. I mean, as far as... We wouldn't be able to treat ourselves any differently than we would be in individual cities. Let's say we wanted to put City Hall on that, it wouldn't be our zoning apartments. Right? Can't make it work. And I don't know what else it's possible to use for off top of that besides a street.
Or a walking path to the park. The city owned, the park's owned by the city. Paid two and a half million dollars for a walking path around the city called "To The Park." And now...
So, it seems... Is there access from the property that... The street that were...
What's before, so is that...
Just before, just after you get past the lake, it runs back and there's houses back in there. That also has access to that park area also, right? Can you walk from that point back to the old railcar?
I don't know. According to this plot here, it's basically just going down Wanda Street down a little bit and then has a cul-de-sac. That's it. So, I mean, what's before here now is just a vacant that street.
Okay. Where Bill Knackler used to live. Remember that?
Remember Bill? Yeah.
The Lucases?
Lucas Street, right.
Okay. That street that runs back, goes back to the east from there. Does that go back to the electric... The park area? So, they still have access?
Come back to Cedar. Cedar. Yes, Cedar. Goes back to the dog park. Or that's...
No, 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 not the dog park. Back to where the neighborhood park is.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways to get to the park. I mean, you can get to the park, but I'd walk from Mass Park all the way around the city to the park. There's an entrance also from the dog park down to that walking trail. There's a, you know, if you wanted to... From the YMCA, if you wanted to walk to the park, you could walk on that trail, the city trail over that edge. There's... But if you're... There's one to walk. There's one that goes on one side of the lake to that little park. And there's a road that comes down and goes all the way around the other side of the lake. All of that goes all the way back to that house. I mean, the... What is it? Shelter house way back there. But that road is kind of a one-way road. You can't pass anybody on that street. It's only 10 feet wide.
Let's go forward now with... Okay, without what you want to do, if that's okay? What's before council is our motion to pass the ordinance 2020-1 on third reading.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make some motions. Is there a second? I'm second. Is there comments that the council would like to talk about?
I don't see that this is any different than any other right-of-way vacation that we've done, you know? And if we just... When you believe looking back is going forward, I'm perfectly willing to do that.
And we didn't make Shipensky speak for the ground either. Like ground the original deed to the city when we got back.
I also think we do need to make a motion or make an attempt to look at subdivision control ordinance for future developments. I think this development was left... The developer did not finish the platted area and it was left to the jurisdiction of the city. I think here going forward, all developers need to make sure that having subdivision control ordinance, that they finish the platted area so issues like this do not come up again.
That is on the... That is on the...
And that is a problem we would see with a lot of developments from this time.
Yeah. Just goes back...
I mean, if you look on the things like you can see a lot of... A lot of these. I mean, that's the same if you would see greens or on things like you would see, that's just the way the cities, they were laid out.
I would just comment that, in my opinion, there's sufficient access to that park in that area, two different areas there for the city to keep that and continue to mow that. It's going to cost us money to keep that property. If we just put a walkway through there, it's going to cost us money to put that walkway through there and continue to do the upkeep on that. So, in my opinion, it makes more sense being a flood plain to go ahead and vacate, so.
And just my opinion, is it just an easement just like any of the others? And, and just my opinion, is it just an easement, just like any of the others? Uh, you know, I think regardless of who owns the property on both sides. I mean, we, I, I don't, we've done it for others. I, that doesn't, it's just logical that we continue the same. Now, if we're going forward, I get it. If we say, from this point forward, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it these evenings, I, I get that. But to do one and not the other, I think we're just picking out people. Any other comments by council? Very well, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. Ordinance two thousand twenty dash one passes on third and final reading. Thank you. New business presentation by Craig Ball of the RMA, which is the Regional Manufacturers Association Alliance. Regional Manufacturers Alliance.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I was supposed to be here.
Be great. I'm gonna try to keep it, uh, as brief as possible. I know everybody's got things to do and everybody's busy. I know most of the council, a couple of you that just spent the night, Josh, I don't think we've ever formally met. My name is Craig Ball. I am the, uh, facility manager for the San Tech Manufacturing Plan and the current chair for the RMA, the Regional Manufacturing Alliance. Uh, just wanted to address the council, uh, on behalf of the RMA. Uh, and start out by showing appreciation for the investment that's already been made, uh, toward the Science Park. Uh, it's been a super facility. Our facility moved in in twenty sixteen. Um, and that, that facility, the Mid-America Science Park was a big piece of that decision to move in. Uh, that was a piece of, uh, changing the actual charter of what we do, uh, the complexity of the work that we do in that manufacturing site uh, because of the ability to do training, do technical training in the park. And shortly after moving in, we, we had, uh, we began the RMA as a, uh, more of a manufacturing forum. So we, all the manufacturing, uh, heads of, of manufacturing plants, the larger manufacturing plants we have here in the county, uh, got together to talk about training needs, uh, personnel shortages, things of that nature. Uh, and, and we started to begin a process of, of designing and developing, uh, training that we could use to build our own staff, uh, accounting line. As we stepped through that process, uh, we had one training provider to begin with, that was Ivy Tech. Uh, we quickly added another training provider in Vincent's University, uh, to help us develop curriculum, uh, to, to help train our folks. And then in that additional process, we then began to make partnerships with the local schools, uh, other training providers, uh, Indiana Department of Corrections, uh, things of that nature to enhance our training or have the ability to train at different levels. We train a lot of high school students, uh, at the park. We train a lot of incumbent workers. Uh, there's been probably twelve, thirteen hundred people, uh, that have gone through training programs at the park, whether it be leadership, uh, quality training, technical training, uh, technician training or, or industrial maintenance type training, welding. Uh, it, it's just an invaluable asset, in my opinion, to the community. Uh, and again, I appreciate the, the investment and the trust that the city has already put into the park. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that the council understands what a differentiator that park makes throughout county. There's a lot of rural communities, there's a lot of rural counties, uh, in the state of Indiana that, that don't offer what we offer. They don't have the ability to train folks, uh, post-secondary training and high school training. We've even began the partnership with the schools all the way down to the kindergarten level. So we're talking about training our future, uh, from a manufacturer standpoint. Uh, I'm, I'm not the youngest guy in the room, probably. Uh, and my career is, is on the tail end. Uh, but we have to, we have to have something in place where we can train our replacements. We can train kids in school that may not have the financial opportunity or they may not have the, uh, educational opportunity to go to college and they want a career. Uh, this park helps us with, you know, train those kids to where they can have a career. It's not just a job. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a nice job. I don't know, I don't think many of the crowd, but I know most of the council have, have been to our shop. Uh, and, and manufacturing over the years has changed. It's not, it's not the typical dirty, uh, loud, dead-end job anymore. Uh, it, it, the, the jobs that we have in the county in manufacturing, they're, they're safe, they're clean, the pay is good. Uh, and there's a tremendous amount of opportunity and growth. If we invest in, in, in training these folks to where we increase the bandwidth uh, and allow them the opportunity to be promoted, uh, without those skills, it, it's tough to do. So, again, I'm not gonna be long-winded, uh, not gonna be on soap life for very long. I know the mayor and I've had a couple meetings, Chuck Rose and I've had a couple meetings, Chris, I go way back, so. It, it's just, I wanna make sure everybody understands that, that the Mid-America Science Park and the partnerships that we have made so far, uh, and the training that we provide for kids, elementary, high school, uh, incumbent workers, folks that are in the system right now, through I D O C, can get training. Uh, we, we're making a difference there. Uh, and, and it's, it's something that I think, uh, is, is warranted. And again, it's not, we don't look in the news every day and see a lot of positive things promoted, uh, from our county. I, I'm a new guy. I've only been, I've only lived in the county for two years. Uh, but we've got a lot of, of press, a lot of positive press, uh, from some of the things that we, we are accomplishing here at the Science Park. Uh, back in October, I had the opportunity, I got a, an invitation to speak at the governor's workforce conference. And those are, that's invitation only by the governor, uh, that they wanna hear from cutting-edge, uh, training solutions. Because the state, they understand that they've lost a generation of kids, uh, right, wrong, and different, that don't understand even how to turn a wrench, don't understand how to retake them. Uh, because we've got all that technical training out of the schools now, uh, well, we've created a gap of a generation gap. So if I wanna go out and hire somebody for maintenance, I have to hire somebody my age or older that may have five, seven, ten years left in their career, and they're at the top of the pay scale. Well, what we're doing at the Science Park, we, we can take kids right out, I've done it. We've taken a kid right out of high school two years ago. We ran him through the training program and I've already taken him from a high school graduate, entry-level, third shift operator, uh, to a full-fledged maintenance guy. So we, I mean, we can make a difference. And, and it's the partnership that we've made and, uh, all the work that we put forward with all the different training providers. Again, we started out with one, and that was Ivy Tech. And today, we've got Ivy Tech, we've got Vincent's University, we've got Indiana Tech and Purdue, all wanting to do training in that park. So, I appreciate you guys letting me speak. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
The open house and kickoff eventually?
Yes, we, we have a meeting on Wednesday from twelve to two, and I would invite, like to invite the entire council to come see. Uh, there'll be a lot more details, there'll be a lot more, you know, we'll cover metrics, we'll cover the number of people that we've trained. Uh, and you'll be able to see what buckets they're in, high school, uh, incumbent worker ID, you'll see whoever they are. Uh, and you'll get, gives you an opportunity to do some network. All the providers should be there. Uh, so you're all welcome to come, uh, join us, twelve to two at the Science Park in the five o'clock.
Is that open to everybody?
That is open to the manufacturers and the partners that we've made right now.
I didn't know whether individuals would come to that.
No, but we, we are talking about having another open house, uh, because, uh, one of the biggest problems that we had today is people don't know what we're doing. They don't know what's available here, whether that be within our county or surrounding counties. So we're trying to extend the reach a bit. Uh, so we'll, we'll try to get something together to have an open house for, for everybody to come see. Anybody else have any other questions? Right? Counsel? All right, I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you, very much, Chair. Councilman Chuck Rose has asked for a previous administration to have a liaison between the city and the Mid-America Science Park. Chuck, would you like to say anything else?
Yeah, I just, very good, wonderful job explaining what we had going on. Uh, there, there are, there are a lot of good things happening there. Uh, and I would encourage council to come to the open house. I want to be, and we'll, we'll be sharing more. I want, I want to be able to share more information as we go along. I, I, I think, I think you're right, Craig. A lot of people are, are aware of the opportunities and what to do.
Yeah, random marketing is probably one of our biggest weaknesses.
Well, a lot is happening very quickly. It's hard to do all of these things and, and tell that at the same-
And from the public side, I understand that, you know, we've, we've owned, uh, that facility since oh nine, but, but the training and, uh, the partnerships that we have made have come in a very short period of time. So over the last twenty-four months or so, it's been the bulk of that. And Mayor, I, I was supposed to ask, I forgot. We have a graduation tomorrow night, uh, or Wednesday night, after the meeting at six o'clock, and we would be happy if you would like to speak at that time. It'd be, you know, fifteen, fifteen, uh, to twenty graduates, I think.
Awesome. Love to, thank you for the invitation.
Six being.
Thank you for the invitation. We, we're gonna have a lot to say about the Mid-America Science Park as well, well, our state of the city address. That's gonna be either the first meeting in February or the second meeting. I will let the media know as to when, when that's gonna be exactly. But we wanna give a state of the city address here as well. So, uh, the Mid-America Science Park is one of Scottsburg's largest asset, if not the largest asset, in the city at this point. And, uh, so, Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, our agenda is Mr. Deaton. This is, uh, this is Brad Deaton. You can see this handsome guy through the wall and also in person. And Mr. Deaton's holding, so where are you holding, Mr. Deaton?
Huh?
Up in the picture.
Uh, Fireman of the Year award.
What'd you say, a Fireman of what?
Of the year.
There you go.
I'm getting you guys all present, uh, slides open right now. If you don't care, I'm gonna sit and talk here so I can do the slides. We started a project, um, cleaning up the city, as you can see there, urban light was what I went with. Um, you can see the definition on the wall there, what it means. We just, uh, me and the mayor talking, and we just need to clean the city, like she said earlier. There's places that you wouldn't even expect, and people live in them, and it's, it's, uh, eye-opening for sure. Uh, I don't take a lot of time off and go through the slides. You'll see the pictures there of different properties that we're gonna address first. We'll send them a letter, ask to be certified. That means they have to sign for it. Uh, when we, when we get it back, then we'll give them ten days, which I think on the letter it says five to ten with parentheses. We gotta change that, change the ordinance thing, or the letter we have, to fit the ordinance. But, uh, once ten days is up, then hopefully they'll clean it up. If not, we'll, uh, send crew in and clean it up and then, then do it for them. Uh, we'll go with some properties here, just to give you guys some examples. It's kinda hard to see here. You got catalogued pictures on your presentation. Uh, this is a bunch of trash here by a light bulb, and then you can see a mattress over here to the right, with a bunch of trash on the porch. Just stuff like that, just real isolation for the city. There's a property that she was talking about, on the next one, actually. This property, uh, had a tree fall across this truck and it's, and it's got four flat tires, and there's just, this is one, we've had a lot of problems actually with animals being inside this house. I don't think anybody lives in it, but, uh, the property owner will get a letter, clean it up. This is the property she's talking about, the forty more, Meridian. It's just got trash bags and trash everywhere. Uh, I'm glad she said something, because I was going, I thought it was terrible. Uh, I don't have two thirty-three on my list, but, uh, I'll check it out tomorrow. Thank you. Okay. But I will go check that out tomorrow for you. But there's another property. There's all the same. These aren't the houses that, uh, need condemned. These are just houses that just have a little trash or junk in them. There's another part of it for the condemned houses. We haven't had any of that yet. As you can see, there's just junk in the front yard. Same thing here. You can see all of them, they're just all the same. We actually went in and cleaned this one up, uh, and then a couple weeks later, it was back to, to back to having a stove in the front yard and on the side part over there, just a bunch of junk. And you got a trailer in the front, a pile of junk, so. So we'll get to seeing that again. As you can see, this is a common thread here, just the same houses with the same problems. Uh, back there by the garage is a bunch of trash. You got a couch in the front yard and then all the whole porch is covered in trash. Same thing here. Same thing. And do you wanna talk about McGovern Street?
On what?
McGovern Street?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about McGovern Street, just hold on to that.
Okay.
Let me just read you the, basically, the letter the governor received. And we have a place today, we have a place for the name from the city of Scottsburg Public Works and Safety and Subdivision. This condition of property is in violation of Article two of the Condition of Premises, Chapter thirty of the City Code of the City of Scottsburg. We give the location. One or more complaints have been made in the City Scottsburg, uh, Scottsburg City Hall regarding the condition of your property at the listed location. At inspection of the property, it appears the property is in violation of Article two, Chapter thirty, the City Code of the City of Scottsburg. Because rubbish or waste material has been allowed to accumulate on the property. The property is not being maintained in a reasonably clean and orderly manner or in a sanitary condition. A copy of that section of Ordinance Code is attached to the reference, is attached for your reference. And we will include the code, it's a two-page code. This notice informs you that you must remedy the condition that violates the City Code by removing the rubbish and waste material on the property. If you fail to do so within ten days after you receive this notice, then the city will arrange for correcting the offending condition of the property. And you will be responsible for the payment to the city as provided by City, by this City Code section. Failure to make payment will result in a lien being placed on your property through the Office of Scott County Treasurer. This is, this is not the intent of the city to cause you, as a property owner or occupant, undue hardship by requiring compliance with City Ordinance. The purpose of this notice is to bring to your attention the fact that the condition of the property is in violation of the City Code and requires the immediate action to bring the property into compliance. The Board hopes that all property owners and occupants of the city will take pride in the condition of their property and are respectful to their neighbors by maintaining their property in good condition. Your cooperation is expected and is also very much appreciated. Thank you, Scottsburg Board of Public Works and Safety. Now, that's the letter that folks are going to get here. And, and it will also, if they are a renter, it will be sent to the label. So both know that you have ten days to remedy the situation, or we will remedy, and you're gonna be charged for it. We want Scottsburg to look, smell, and taste clean. That will raise our property values, that will raise our pride. We have a lot of things coming in Scottsburg. I can assure you that. A lot of improvement's coming to Scottsburg. And it's gonna start sometimes in your own backyard, you know, or front yard, or your neighbor's yard. But we're gonna clean Scottsburg up. Again, we moved Bradley to this, to this position of a city inspector slash State Enforcement Office. So, uh, you know, we wanna get word out to the public that, uh, we are going to begin this process in earnest. Okay? So I just want people to know. Uh, thank you, Bradley, very much. Bradley has the McGovern Street pro, uh, project. We had the Meridian Street project, where we had a sewer break there as well. It is a, it is a, uh, an ancillary line coming from the home to it, so it's not a main sewer line. Here, we had a main sewer break. While I was in Indianapolis, at the mayor's boot camp, I was called, I believe, I don't remember if it was Wednesday or Thursday. I said, do I need to come back? But we had a hole, uh, up here in the street, about the size of your kitchen table or bigger. It took almost half of the street. And, uh, you know, uh, we brought the generator in to unplug things. It got stuck three times. We had to bring another generator, unload that, that one got stuck. So, uh, the rains were plus. The rains were flooding our, our sewer plant as well. So, uh, we brought equipment out and right about fifty feet from this one, it had been dug up and fixed. About a hundred feet down, it had been dug up and fixed, and then we had an issue here. So what we're doing here, uh, we had a contractor come out. And again, the city of Scottsburg, I want you to know, the city of Scottsburg is doing this. We are subcontracting because we don't have an excavator that can reach twenty feet deep or thirty feet deep. We have three excavators, or tractors with arms, and we can reach about nine to ten feet, but we can't reach down this far. Those boxes you're seeing are boxes required by OSHA, so many could be in there. So should there be a landslide come in, it's not gonna bury it. It's so deep, we have two eight-foot boxes on top of each other. So we're, we're sixteen feet deep right now. And- And, and, and we have found this, it took basically today to get dug down there, to get it all out. And, uh, we've taken out a tremendous amount of gravel. This area had already been repaired at one time. Uh, and because this is a main line, a ten-inch line going in to feed our sewer plant, I'm basically in the position that we're, you know, we're probably going to replace the entire line, guys, from Main Street all the way down to the sewer plant. I'm gonna stop right there at the sewer plant, because we're gonna have to redo the sewer plant. We're either gonna have to build a new one, or we're gonna have to redo the current one we have. And, and again, this is gonna be in the city, uh, state of the city address. I've been done, I've been working tremendously. Our biggest problem right now, the biggest problem, we have several problems, biggest problem we have is our, our collection system and our sewer plant. And all this is gonna be addressed, and you really need to make sure you try to attend those, those meetings there. But right now, uh, it's, it's a thousand feet, we took a wheel, we walked it off. We could buy, we can increase the size of that ten-inch line to twenty-four inches. That's what I wanna do, that's a main going to the sewer plant. That pipe is twenty-seven dollars a foot, so a thousand feet's gonna be twenty-seven thousand dollars to increase the size of that. So, and then the problem is, we gotta fill it up with rock. So I got six thousand ton of rock. And, and we're negotiating, uh, getting the price down. We've gotten the price down about thirty percent, forty percent, because we're buying so much, that rock's seventy-eight thousand dollars. We've got a contractor, this is the only thing we're subbing out, is that contractor with two tractors and four men. It's three hundred dollars an hour or twenty-four hundred a day. Where we may need them up to two, maybe even three weeks. So that's gonna be, you know, as you can see, twelve thousand, it could be twenty-four thousand, it could be thirty-six thousand dollars. But again, we have Scottsburg employees out there. Today, we had probably six employees, we had, we had a, a track, not a track, but a bob killer, two of ours. We're going to, well, once we get that in, we start digging, that box will be there. They'll just drag that box and put, drop another line in, hook it up. They'll drag the box and drop another line in, hook it up. They're gonna be doing that. Our guys will actually be hooting the homes up, down into those. So those homes are all gonna have to be cut off, as you can see, and we'll hook it there. We're gonna, we have got four main manholes there. So the bottom part of that manhole has to be taken off and put a new one back. So it's a twenty-four inch hole, not a ten-inch hole. So it's gonna cost us a bunch to cut that out, twenty-four, just, that would be just to buy the bottom rim. So we'll just unstack it, put a black one down here. And anyway, those are, that's, that bottom rim's nine hundred dollars. And we have to buy one complete new manhole, it's all brick, it's that old, it's all brick. And so, uh, a new manhole's about twenty-five hundred. So it's about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is what we're gonna end up spending. If you look at the Lake Iowa Project, that was what we call a pipe burst. You take an eight-inch line, and you dig twenty feet down, and you've got a press. And they take a thirteen-inch line, and they press it down that clay pipe, and it just burst that pipe. So they replaced that burst pipe with a thirteen-inch line, increased the capacity. But the cost there was, I have to bill my desk, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars right now. I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So as you can see, we're half the price, less than half the price. We've got a lot of other areas, we're gonna go through the entire city, redoing our lines. But it's a new process, that we had the department head of the wastewater, and, and, and the collection system guy. We all went down and saw how well he's doing this. They've been in it for seven years. They've got a relining process, you can reline it in line, and it costs us twenty-two dollars a foot. If we hire it done, it's eighty-six dollars a foot. I'm wanting to buy the equipment, I'll be coming to you about that, because we can reline our entire city with that and then sell the equipment if we need to. They say it lasts fifty years. And nobody said we've had no issues of costly filming. We're gonna use our, our filming trucks to be filming costly also. So, uh, but anyways, we, we're attacking the INI. Uh, I've got engineers coming back. We have bid the, we've bid the plan out two ways, to replace the plant or to redo the plant we have. And so we have one bid on the docket now. That bid in the contract stated that should we go forth with building that plant that we have with the drawings we have, we have to use that engineer. It's, it's, it sticks in the contract, we can't change the contract. I've got four, I've interviewed probably twelve other engineering companies. I picked the top four of that twelve, and asked them to bid it as well. I've got bids coming back this week and next week on that plant, or to redo the current plant we have. And our current plant is really a good plant in a lot of ways. It does need updating. You know, there's several areas that we do, you know, we need updating. So again, I'll bring that to you at the, uh, at, at the city. But I want you to see what's going on. Every time you come to me, I wanna tell you what's going on in your city, and what we're doing to correct it. And, and if you have ideas, you know, please don't think that I've got all the ideas. I need everybody's ideas, you know? But I'm telling you, this is where we're at. And instead of just fixing that one location, where it's about eighteen to twenty thousand to fix it every time they go out to do that, or do we just replace it and be done? I'm a guy, my boy said, you don't do it right, son, when you gonna come back and do it right? So I'm, I'm for the opinion of go, go ahead and do it right, get it done. We don't have problems like this in the new sections of town. The new section hasn't all been put in with plastic. This is the old plate tile, and it's buttoned together. It gets a crack in it, that crack continues to widen. You know, water comes in, dirt comes in. We're selling five hundred thousand gallons of water a day, and we're treating, in the, you know, we're treating a million of them. So we're treating double, sometimes triple what we're, what we're selling. So that's a lot of the problems in our collections. But I wanna let you know what's going on. Any questions about that? And, uh, dangerous, so we've got, we're using extreme care out there as well, so, uh... Next is the- Mayor, before you leave, Mr. Deaton, could I make some comments?
Sure.
And, uh, is that a brand-new job here at Scottsburg, never been done?
Uh, I couldn't tell you that, Tom. I've been, you know, I, I've, I've only been with the city for, you know, I was the councilman right here, it was when I was there.
Has a job description been written on that form, a job description?
Uh, another good question. That's a good question. You know, I, I doubt, Tom, I'll be honest. I wanted to get a man on the road looking right away, so I put Mr. Deaton on the road right, right away looking for the problems.
Do any other communities have such a job?
Yes, they do.
Do you know what they pay?
I know, sir.
What's Mr. Deaton's salary?
I'd have to look, sir, it's all, it's all a public thing, I couldn't tell you exactly.
Can I ask Mr. Deaton?
Yeah, yeah, we're passing public comments now, Tom. I mean, that, that, those comments, you can ask, you know, ask me, you know, right now, we're trying to get through the council stuff. Okay? So, uh, and then, the... Okay, the next thing we had is the council reappointment to various boards and commissions. Uh, Chuck Rose, President of Council.
I know. We have propositions going to be due, uh, what was council, whether it does be open enough for nomination or that way. Uh, I'm sure who we have and what people. What do you think, Eric?
Uh, we have, what boards do you have?
We have two council appointments to the redevelopment commission.
Okay.
We have a council appointment to the, uh, area plan.
Okay.
And a council appointment to the finance committee.
Okay.
I'm aware of Jesse, that was the only ones we had.
Those are the only ones that are currently out.
Okay, and have you talked with council so far? Okay, so, uh...
Uh, Bill Holman and I currently serve on redevelopment commission. Both of us would like to continue to do that if it's in agreement with the council, uh, Rick Mannes. We'd like to serve on the plan commission, if we can get an asset there. Christian Evans has agreed to serve on finance.
Okay, with that, uh, with that said, uh... Do I hear a motion to support those names as President of Council has stated?
I'm ready to motion.
Okay? Do I make the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now's the time for questions or comments for all council. Any other things else to say? Okay, and the last for a vote? All in favor of Chuck Rose, Bill Holman on redevelopment, Rick Mannes taking the area plan position, and Christian Evans taking the finance commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the left side? Okay. Motion passed, congratulations. Uh, it's like the last thing we have is a request by the Scott County Business Commission to close the streets around the square on September the fourth and fifth for a bicentennial celebration. Wow. We have Mr. Mike.
Good evening, Mr. Deaton. Mr. Deaton, yes. I have a little handout that will help you understand what we're asking for. Again, as we've gotten into this, in our organization, we kind of have the primary, at this point, organization for our bicentennial. Uh, we have been getting a lot of input from community and various organizations as well. Requesting something a little bit more than what we're doing this Saturday, with the vision kickoff. And they've requested that, uh, look into putting together a bicentennial festival that would be available for every sort of community to come out and celebrate. Some of the things we've been talking about in this particular festival is not, not only having food vendors out there and, you know, local businesses, they are nonprofits, but going young there and opening it up so that there's kids, where kids can come out, and we have a touch-a-truck and inflatables and maybe incorporate, pardon, zip line for some of us who are kids. Uh, we've also talked about the new car show, an A and T tractor show, reenactments, a health fair. Uh, looking back, if you go back in time, one of the biggest events that took place in our county's history was spelling bees, incorporating the spelling bee as well. Uh, we plan on having three different stages, one main stage that will have entertainment running on the radio. We'll have a heritage stage, which will be more of an educational, programmatic stage. We'll talk about our history, identify folks, also reach out and introduce some of those individuals that will be part of our history that are still alive and, you know, opportunity to tell their story. And we'll also have a kid's stage, looking at pancake breakfast. How many of you understand what a pie social is? Okay, let's go back a few, few years. I had to be instructed, I want a pie social there, but, uh, we've had a request to bring back a pie social as well as an ice cream social. So we're, we're looking at making this, you know, a day and a half of fun for the entire family. And that is why we're requesting the closure of the streets. And as you can see, we're looking at Friday, September fourth, and Saturday, September fifth. The closures will begin at noon on Friday, giving us time to get everything set up, all of those vendors, all of those vendors in and set up by five P M., kicking off, uh, the events Friday night, and then all, running all day through Saturday, uh, eventually turning the, the streets clean and back over, hopefully by one o'clock on Sunday night. Now, we're looking at South Main, uh, street from the intersection of East McLean or Highway fifty-six to West Cherry Street. South First Street from the intersection of East McLean and Highway fifty-six to West Cherry Street. And then the East Correll from the East Reloast Street to South Second Street. We're hoping that that is enough space, plus the courthouse and law, to incorporate all of the fun activities for our communities.
What question do you have, Mr. Mike?
Well, I guess just off the top of my head, concerns would be at noon on a Friday, getting the courthouse square cleared off for you. I don't know who would have to do that. Um, I would think that someone would need to reach out to businesses in that area.
Absolutely.
And let them know, I don't know if you need, would wanna have a, uh, feedback from the merchants on the square and I. Um, other than that, I, I, the Friday at noon would be my biggest concern, um, in law, as a law enforcement perspective. Number one, just to repeat, how many vehicles are parked there from eight in the morning till noon? If, if, if they don't know, how are they gonna get them removed?
Well, the beautiful thing about this particular Friday is Friday the fourth, Labor Day weekend. And as you know, there's hardly anybody working on that Friday for some reason, I don't know why. It's a business day, we should all be working, right? But, uh, it all seems to be a little light on that day. So while I understand the concern, I'm hoping that it won't be near enough traffic on that Friday as it normally would be at Victor's St. Louis, June, or ours.
Um, I'm trying to go off memory here. I, I don't know if I agree with that or not. Seems like it's, it's busy that Friday, because they're off Mondays, am I correct? Am I correct? But it seems like that Friday's very busy with the people finishing up their day. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but that's my little concern. Um, just to clear that off. We've, uh, trying to locate people, as Karen said, just with two, two-hour parking on the square. Just trying to locate someone's ownership of that car. Um, but it's Jade, where she had plenty of time to advertise or to market. Usually, our street department, Jason Abbeke, will block those roads off for us. Uh, he's got cones and stuff, he can pull them off as long as he has a little bit of notice.
To give you a little bit of background, my experience, I've been to a number of street festivals from St. Matthews over in Louisville, all the way up to Noblesville, which is my hometown, during the street festival up there. We've not typically had any challenges. Again, part of it has been the notification, far enough in advance, signage. As you can, you look at every twenty feet, it says, no parking this day to this date. But we've never had, had to tow anybody in the, gosh, if I add those together, in six years that I've done those two events. So I would like to take the same, or incorporate the same methods that would assist in that process so that we are not forced to face with an issue of, unfortunately, towing someone's vehicle. I don't know, the city would appreciate that very much.
I, I don't know.
Well, I'm not trying to bump heads, but I think it's a great idea, just, like I said, we have between now and then to figure out how to make sure that those vehicles are off. Um, once, once it's cleared, of course, there's not gonna be any problems. Normally, there's not, we're gonna bear to pay it off, and the street department does. Just getting rid, and I would make sure we check the, the business owners. That may sound like common sense, but those would be the real reasons.
Happy to do so.
Mr. Mike, why are you choosing Friday?
Pardon?
Why are you choosing Friday?
As you get, in, in the conversations I have with a lot of folks, that as you get further into that Labor Day weekend, it becomes more of a family, uh, event. Times are spent with kickknives and going out of town and sort of things. So the process was starting on Friday, um, just a quick six or five o'clock in the evening until, unless music is done that evening at ten, ten-thirty, and then starting again on Saturday. That was the purpose there, kind of following the same format. I mean, we're working in conjunction with, uh, Scottsburg Main Street, as well as Scott County Chamber of Commerce on to see if that, if their thought process was that it would be a similar format to our community as used to with Mayor Fest, as well, and Court Fest, and those that have come before.
Council, you have questions? Would you, would you wanna try to take action this evening?
Sure.
Mr. President, I'll take action this evening.
I think if we're gonna do it, uh, farther advanced, we can get, you know, set that, that, uh, motion that we approved and request to close the streets. I know, I'm-
My hand up. Chuck makes a motion, uh, to close those streets. Mr. Mike, is the lady, is her second?
I'll second.
She remains seconds, she remains seconds. Uh, now's the time for questions, comments, concerns.
Please, say.
You might wanna, you might wanna let the schools, not also, put their bus racks.
What?
Because they, they have enough at some times.
I love the, I love the opportunity to sit down with you and discuss this, or that, the, the, we don't want anything slip through the cracks.
Sure, absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign? If that passes, you have?
Thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Was it here successfully? We have one other thing for council that's not legitimate, but was brought to, uh, our legal council's attention today, so Mr. Josh will perform us.
There, I've got ordinance twenty twenty dash oh three, and all this passes to the right, and passes back to the left. So basically what this is, this is the approval of a, come to the council of a change in zoning that was presented to the, uh, advisory plant commission that was passed unanimously with a favorable recommendation at the end of October. Uh, it came to light, I guess, last week while I was gone, that it had not been official, there had not been official action yet from the council to approve the recommendation or to reject it. Uh, we have ninety days or expected to do that, that is, that time is today. If this board was not to take any action, it would still, it would be approved, their, uh, recommendation, plant commission will become law, uh, we would still need to take some formal acknowledgement of that in the sense of ordinance recording that, so future landowners or city officials would know the state of the zoning of that property. Uh, I asked April Ramoni to send me what she had, and she has sent me the favorable recommendation unanimously. What I can gather from the documents is this is the corner, pulled it up on the map, this is the lemon property, Michael and Stephanie, the address for is one fifty four East Fairground Road. If you were, if you were on thirty one and turned east on Fairground, it would be the second parcel on the set. It is a vacant piece of land, uh, looks like it's just under an acre, and they're requesting that it be, that it be changed from industrial, uh, to residential zone.
And April has given me her file, I have only one printout, but it shows the outline of that property. If you guys wanna take it and pass it on, I'm sorry.
If we do this next council meeting, will fall in under that ninety days?
No, no, ninety days is up today. Uh, zoning, one of the things is typically ordinance says we need pre readings most times, this is not one of those examples. Uh, you are, our zoning board is advisor, so they make recommendations to this board. So they basically set their eyes and the ears, they would hear the testimony, hear people who are opposed, uh, this, this shows no opposition, uh, that, uh, it met all the requirements of the plant commission. So essentially, typically when they would come forward to the next level, you're reviewing to make sure that everything is done properly and then approved, so. We're adopting, it, it came, we're adopting her prediction, it came with a unanimous stable recommendation.
I thought they said we were just gonna take no action and allow it to become affirmative action tomorrow, I mean, that's what, which you told me.
That is not my implication, my property, my, from a legal standpoint, if we just do nothing, then there's not going to be an ordinance or anything recorded, so let's say five years, you go to go by that property, or, you know, the zoning here in the city office, and they may reflect that at change, if there's nothing recorded in the chain of custody, that could be, chain of title, that could be a issue for a future, um, land of, uh, the claim from a attorney standpoint, I would prefer I to have something in there.
Well, and I have to agree with the property and the situation, I have no problem with that.
And you might have more facts to share with the rest of them than I have.
Nothing other than what I have got from April, and believe it's put in, in, pretty straightforward.
Because it looks like, I mean, at this point, a point nine six acre lot, I don't know what industrial laws you could really do on that thing.
Maybe they want to be able to sell someone, but, uh, they, they had someone in mind who wanted, when they initiated the zoning and, you know, the pathway, or, or the zoning was, they, they liked to, you know, sell.
The other thing I would assume, and I, I'm getting to a territory I don't want to be in, assuming, but, and one of the things, if, if that is the intention of selling to someone to build a property, right now, that being a tax industrial, a tax rate, it might be something different, in the eyes for that of the city, is obviously if someone buys that and builds a property on there, that we're going to create more tax benefits than we would causing it to remain industrial anymore, so, uh, then that maybe the city will be more in the end, if that ends up being what happens.
I have no problem making a motion to approve the zoning request.
I'll second that. Okay, there's a motion to, uh, to approve the zoning request, Chuck Rose, seconded by Dr. Lewis. So, uh, that's it, there's questions or comments, but council's time.
Let's find out, I'll make that by April, if she wants to know if it's permanent, it's on or off.
Everybody okay? Then we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign?
So what happened?
Okay? Okay? What do you have to say?
Yes, I would just like for the minutes to reflect that before the meeting, I did ask the council to sign that addendum to, uh, two thousand, ordinance two thousand and twenty dash two, um, the reason being that when I reported it last week, I had not recorded it as it was passed. So I, I would just like to put, you know, make the council aware that that will be in the minutes, that those were signed, just the addendum as you all passed it last week. Is that acceptable, councilman? Okay, so we will, we'll do that.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd like to see if we, if there's any interest to move our, uh, fourth, our March, last March, uh, city council meeting to the thirtieth. Due to the spring break for the school systems, both school systems are off, spring break, which is unusual for Austin, Scottsburg to be on the spring break at the same time, but.
So we want to move it to March thirtieth?
I think it's the twenty, currently the twenty fourth-
Okay.
-and the thirtieth would be the fifth Monday.
Okay.
So it'd still be two meetings in the month.
Yeah, that is right.
So.
It was March meeting.
Three twenty fourth to-
It's three twenty third.
Three thirty, thirty.
Three thirty. The motion then to move, uh, March's council meeting to the thirtieth?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign? Passionate, we'll move if the council is in. So, you can check your calendar. Other, other things from council?
I just wanna make one comment, I appreciate Shelley for coming in today and stating that, and I wanna applaud Mayor Hamek and Mr. Deaton as well. Coaching enforcement is something that I'm very passionate about, um, as a younger person beginning to start a family, I look at territories and look at cities, you, we need to be proud of Scottsburg, I'm very proud of Scottsburg. Craig is, is, uh, works for Stan Tech as well, understands from a business side how effective it is to drive through our city and look at how much people take pride in their community, that's incentivizing the community, uh, incentivizing the business to come in here as well as the property owner. So, like I said, I just wanted to applaud Mayor Hamek and Brad Deaton as well, I think that's something that we need to be, uh, work diligently on and, and support one hundred percent.
Thank you, thank you, counsel.
I've got a question on that same thing, is the ordinance that you're putting in, does it also take care of, uh, company property like, uh, Gooden's, for instance?
As far as Gooden, for, yes, it's gonna be citywide.
So it's, so it would take care of the junkyard and zoning Highway thirty one?
Yes. I thought we were talking residential, commercial, industrial.
Okay, good.
So we may be going into the industries as well, just checking out, making sure that we're putting our sewer systems, it's okay as well. So, so this is, this is current launch going forward. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.